And what we're gonna have here first is public hearing on ordinance number seven two two, which is the parking ordinances. Yes.
Okay.
I guess we'll let the chief tell us some of the stuff that we changed on that ordinance, or so everybody that's read it and stuff might understand what you were reading. Did you hear me, Chief?
Sorry about that, I was unmuting myself. No, you cut out when you were saying something about the ordinance.
I was, I've opened the public hearing for the ordinance, I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to say on it, or about the changes while we're in the public hearing.
Um, yeah, I'll start it off. So what I did by redoing the ordinances is, first of all, I took out the specific parking-related ordinances and set them aside into a new article within the motor vehicle section. I added a definition section in the first article that would apply to all of our motor vehicle ordinances, so it's consistent throughout. There have been some specific changes that I would like to bring to the council's attention to ensure that it is discussed. First of all, in, would be page eight of the new ordinance, there is a specific violation by parking a motorhome, travel trailer, recreational vehicle, and trailer on a city street for more than 24 hours. Also added a section which would prohibit the parking of any vehicle that's under the control of a business that's engaged in the selling, restoration, repair, or storage of a vehicle on a city street at any time. So if you're a repair facility, the vehicles that you're working on need to be stored on the business property and not on a city street. And that could have an impact on some of the businesses in town, also sales. So if you're selling a vehicle that's under your control and your business is to sell vehicles, you cannot park any of those vehicles on a city street as well. Additionally, in generally, there's also another ordinance I added which would prohibit anybody parking a vehicle on a city street for the purpose of displaying it for sale. So for example, if I wanted to sell my pickup truck, I can't take it down to a parking area on Fourth and Birch and just leave it there with a for sale sign on it. Under the section for handicap parking, I did increase the minimum fine to $25, but not to be fined more than $50. And then primarily the rest of it is cleaning up the language of the ordinances, making it consistent throughout. There's different portions where they refer to a law enforcement officer or an officer. So I tried to go throughout the ordinances and clean that up to just be a police officer. And those are the highlights. Oh, there's a couple of areas where I cleaned up some verbiage to ensure that we are documenting our actions related to vehicles that are being towed. There used to be, the ordinance for impounded vehicles had a storage fee of $1.50 a day. And if we have a tow company store a vehicle for us, most tow companies are charging at least $20 a day for storage. So I took the $1.50 cents out. I changed some of the verbiage in finding owners of vehicles, as these days, we have access to computer systems that tell us who a registered owner of a vehicle is and who may have a lien on a vehicle. And then finally, changed the definition on an abandoned vehicle when it would be appropriate to tow that vehicle to increase the hours from 48 to 24, or 72 hours, so it's increased by 24 hours. So the vehicle's there for two days, it's not an abandoned vehicle, we change it to three days, 72 hours, and also if it's not being tended to. For example, sometimes my pickup truck is parked out in front of my house, and I don't drive it for four or five days, we wouldn't be trying to tow that vehicle, we're looking for the vehicles that, we can't find the owner, it's not parked in front of an owner's house, it's obviously been abandoned by the owner or operator for some reason. And those are the highlights of the changes that I am recommending.
Are you ready, Chief? Remember, I have a little much about this, I've been trying to figure it out. My first question is, are these ordinances going to be aggressively enforced? The ones we have now don't seem to be.
Well, that was part of the reason for the change, was to get the language more consistent, and then to have a discussion about what some of these ordinances, how they would have an impact, and allow the council to decide whether it's appropriate to enforce them. So for example, I've noticed that there's a lot of recreational vehicles that come out in the spring and stay parked near residences on streets until late fall. And under the ordinance, it's gonna be strictly 24 hours. And I want to make sure that the council is aware that if this, these ordinances are passed, as is, there's going to be recreational vehicle owners that are gonna be getting citations, parking citations.
I think they should. They block traffic, you can't see around you, the street sweeper can't operate, it's not necessary. All right, next one I want to know, what are the consequences?
The, well, it's gonna be up to the judge if they're found responsible. The, I have to admit, I don't know the fine schedule for some of these, I'd have to look it up and get back to you.
All right, or is there any need for a proof of age or driver's license on any of these issues?
No, most of these ordinance changes are related to the owner-operator of a vehicle, and to be an owner-operator, you're required to have a driver's license.
So where does that, where do we stand with these battery-operated toy cars that are being driven up and down by the streets for five to 10 year old children?
Are you talking about the, the small one that children use?
Yes. They're driving them up and down the city streets.
Do you feel that there should be a specific ordinance prohibiting that? Because I, I primarily focused the changes to parking of vehicles. However, in the definitions, let me go back to the definitions to see if those toy vehicles I'm referring to would meet the definition of a vehicle. Well, technically, it would meet the definition of a vehicle, and if that's something that the town council wanted the police department to enforce, I'd have to go back to some of the moving violations and ensure that we have a specific ordinance for a moving violation of operating such vehicles on streets.
I think we definitely need to have something that, those dangerous little vehicles, they ran up and down my street all summer, and they're practically impossible to see those little kids are driving up and down the street. I'd like to see something done to address that issue, to get those little vehicles off the street. All right, that, next question. On section nine, are side-by-sides, four-wheelers, and snowmobiles covered under the motorcycle definition?
No, because a motorcycle requires a seat or a saddle for the operator to sit on, and no more than three vehicles, or three tires in contact with the roadway. So as far as a utility vehicle, a side-by-side, that's listed under vehicle. A util, I would, I would recognize that as a utility terrain vehicle.
What about a snowmobile?
About a, a snowmobile? Well, there's, there's already a specific ordinance against operating a snowmobile on town streets.
That's not included in your aim, or is it?
No, because again, these are parking ordinances, and we didn't specifically prohibit parking a snowmobile on a city street, but we can add that if you think it's appropriate.
Well, if we're talking about parking vehicles, it seems like they should be in there somewhere. You get three or four of those parked on the street, there's still.
Well, there's, there's, we have an ordinance that does not allow them to be ran on the city street, so they shouldn't be parked on the street.
They shouldn't be parked on the city street?
Oh, they're on a tracer.
All right, do, do any of these things need to be addressed on things such as authorized parades going through town? Do they need to be any exemptions or ways that parades could be held with vehicles not coming under these ordinances, or do they all come under the ordinances?
Well, again, this is designed to be directed towards parking of vehicles and not operation of vehicles. And I can add parades specifically to my list of things to address besides the small electric vehicles operated by, typically by children.
Because if you're having a parade, and people have these vehicles parked illegally where you're staging a parade or something, there maybe should be some kind of exemption for an authorized parade that allows vehicles to be used to support the parade.
I, I don't think I heard you clearly, Councilmember Nun. The only concern I would have parades and parking of vehicles would be that we could remove parked vehicles from a parade route if they are blocking the parade route in some form or fashion.
But as far as staging the parade, if someone needed to park a big trucker, a big horse trailer, or somebody to get their entry into the parade, does anything like that need to be addressed, to supporting parked little vehicles? They're okay?
I, I don't see a specific need for it, however, for future parade operations where it actually comes before the council, maybe we can change the language on the permits so that we address a variance to allow staged vehicles to park in violation of the ordinances as long as they don't inhibit traffic flow.
Okay, and let's see. I guess that's pretty much what I was concerned, I'm, I'm just most concerned about those battery-operated cars. We need to do something to get those off the street, parked below the street, or whatever, they're extremely dangerous, or a kid killed on the, on the face.
That would be more in the traffic laws, wouldn't it, than parking, Chief?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, is that would fall under the moving vehicle violation, and I've got it on my list of things to look at, and I can bring that before the council with a, a change in the future.
And do any of these changes have any effect on these large trucks hauling materials through town, or anything we can add to these things?
I, we don't have control about the oversized vehicle permits that come through, that all goes through the county or the state.
So we just say welcome, glad to have you on board, boys?
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you clearly.
So we just say welcome, glad to have you driving over our curbs and knocking our cars out, that type of thing?
Unfortunately, yes.
That's nice, friendly, friendly little old town, aren't we?
I, I feel, I consider ourselves to be very lucky that we have not had any significant issues where we've had roadways blocked for hours because some of those long trailers aren't able to make a turn, which has happened out on highways and some of the county roads.
Okay, so I guess that's pretty much it. Can I, I want to thank you for taking the time and energy to go through this to try to make our town a safer place, particularly these issues of recreational vehicles that are parked on streets for very long periods of time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, Chief, this is Roy. I like the, the change for 24 hours on the recreational vehicles, a lot of people are taking advantage of that, and I've seen that around town a lot. As far as the electric cars and things that kids are driving, I think we're getting in the weeds on that a little bit. I think there's some verbiage we could put out there to let the, let the citizens know about the kids with their electric vehicles peering out in the street, not staying on the sidewalk, whatnot, but yeah, I think we might be getting in the weeds on that. You're gonna have to get a 12-year-old with a 16-year-old driver's license, so I just think we're, we can approach that some other way.
I think they do have parents that could be responsible for them. I just don't see how a couple of those kids, kids are killed on my street this summer, you absolutely cannot see those little vehicles coming down the street when they're out there driving. They're weaving in, out, off the sidewalk, on the street, I just see it as a really dangerous situation, potential for a real tragic ending.
Yes, this is Boots, I have a question real quick, I missed some of that. Is anything addressed in this ordinance about how far you have to be parked from the corners?
Uh, no, nothing has been done on that yet. I've done a little bit of work with the, the town engineers in trying to get a traffic study done, because there are some corners, I think, where we need to have the no parking area set back further to ensure safe movement by vehicles when intersecting and moving through an intersection at perpendicular intersections.
Okay, thanks, yeah, that's what I was wondering.
This is Roy again, Randy, would you know about that, what are we, what are we painting those curbs back at now?
I don't know, the distance on the L, the hydrants, they're supposed to be 15 feet.
Okay. Yeah, I agree, I think maybe on some of these intersections, they should be back farther.
So where we come to those hydrants also, down the arc feet, they're having a problem this summer, there's water trucks coming down in there and parking next to those hydrants, trying to get their trucks loaded with water.
We were selling water to a couple, actually, to, I don't know about this, we were selling water to a couple companies, they were booming up a couple hydrants.
And Andrew Hunt on a construction.
Well, no nuisance, well, they were pumping at the corner, where they would have traffic where they were blocked up, where they were loading their trucks in there. Is there anything we can do to address that?
Boom to another corner, so there are nuisance for somebody else. If they need water, and are buying water, I don't know what to do.
Yeah, it's part of the construction season, you know, they're getting water for, especially when they're doing compacting, compaction back, especially on the water sewer, along the water lines in our streets. The sewer lines aren't near as bad, but they still have to have, they're still gonna make some water in their dirt to get their correct compaction, or they keep compactor back, so it's just something we're gonna deal with, and the fact that, like Andrew Hunt, was staged for the south, the third street project here, down around, off of Second and Grove, it's impacted your neighborhood a little bit, but I, I thought first, as much as went on, they did a pretty good job not creating a big problem for a lot of people, so, and they're just about done, they're, all they've got left is working up that alleyway for the sewer, they've only got a couple of blocks left to do as well.
Yeah, John Moulton's talking, he said, can we hear him? He just texted me.
What's his number? What's his cell?
Get into my contacts.
Is he, is he a 904?
Uh, 247-0604, he's a cell.
I don't see him called into the conference room, at least. The call-in information was on the email I sent to him a little bit ago.
Starting to look at the new email. He wants to just call himself. Yeah, I can do the same thing.
We just pretty much, yeah.
Yeah.
We've got one number, and they're a 904, 300.
Okay. We're trying to get that.
They might have unmuted themselves.
While we're working on that, reference setbacks for intersections, it depends on, for, this is for councilmember Fonz, it depends on the design and the use of the roadway, but for example, the recommendation by MUTCD, it's the manual for uniform traffic control license, which is pretty much the standard for signs and roadway markings across the United States. There should be a 20-foot no parking area from the intersecting sidewalk back for the approaching traffic. But then, it, it depends on, again, what kind of markings you have in place, and what kind of sidewalks and intersecting roads you have.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Someone called me.
Yeah, he just, I just, he just left, I mean, maybe trying to.
He was just in there.
Yeah, I was watching him, and it came up.
Chief, can you hear me?
Yeah, he just, I just, he just left, I mean, maybe trying to.
Chief, can you hear me? It's John.
Yeah, John.
Yes, I can hear you.
Chief, I got a question about the 24-hour on the recreational vehicle, is there a time on it already in the ordinance?
Yeah, he just, I just, he just, I mean, maybe trying to.
Chief, can you hear me? It's John.
Yeah, John, I can hear you.
I'm getting a lot of feedback right now, and Jared, is there any way when people not in the room with you are talking that you can mute that microphone that you guys are using? Because I get a lot of feedback and probably fan noise too, and it's hard to hear the ones that are calling in.
Yeah, we can go ahead and do that, if that works.
Okay, Councilmember Moulton, reference the current one. Give me a second, and I will find how the trailer one is currently written, and I will read it to you, it's on page. It'd be on page five, and it basically says, on page five, the off-street parking talks about motorhomes, travel trailers, recreational vehicles and trailers may be stored or parked for more than 24 hours in any zone if vehicles located off of public street, roadway, easement, or alley, and does not create a safety hazard and is not occupied. So it, there's an implied violation there. I added it to the parking general, generally, to make it a very specific and standout violation to do that. However, I've also left in the off-street parking considerations that you can have up to three trailers on your, your property off of the roadway, and that they can be occupied if you get a permit from the town council.
Okay.
Okay.
Chair.
Bottom. Usually, I know it's a 36.
You see, but he shouldn't be watching it and on the phone, because if he's doing both, yes, it's gonna be 30 seconds behind for the stream. That's why we're here, he needs to. Councilmember Moulton, I muted you from my end, you'll have to unmute yourself on the phone. But yeah, he had, my guess is he had the, that's why we're here. Councilmember Moulton, I muted you from my end, you'll have to unmute yourself on the phone. If any of our councilpersons are watching the live stream as well, if you could please mute that live stream, if you're watching it on some other device, if you're also called in.
I just muted mine, can you hear me over the live feed?
Yeah, we can hear you via the live feed, but if you're watching the live feed, it's about 30 seconds delayed, and so we're picking up a feedback loop from that audio.
Okay, I've muted my phone.
Are there any more questions for the chief, or any other thing anybody wants to say about this, these parking ordinances?
I think it's a very good plan, I really appreciate you taking time to try to get this more specific, and better operational order.
Is there anybody else on the council that has any other statements to make? If not, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing, and we will open the council meeting. We don't have a flag up here, so we won't be saying the pledge. I believe we have everybody in attendance, either by phone or the live, not the live feed, but on our teams meeting, so I guess we'll move forward with the meeting. I don't believe there's any additions or deletions. Is there somebody who would like to make a motion for approval of the, of the minutes for the council meeting on October 26th, 28th? This executive session of October 26th, the October 29th work session, and the October 29th executive session. Councilman Nun has made the motion to approve all these minutes as presented, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Councilman Kincaid. Hearing no discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay. Motion carries. I'll go ahead and start with reports. I don't know if we've got John on it or not. Councilman Moulton, do you have anything you want to bring up?
He hasn't called back in.
He's not called back in, okay. Councilman Fonz?
I have nothing.
Councilman Kincaid?
Uh, nothing except for listening on COVID-19 reports.
Okay. And Councilwoman Nun?
Uh, yes, from the commissioner's dinner, I thought there was a few interesting things. It appears that the focus in our area for road approval, we'll be working on the Mormon Canyon Road from east to town to widen the road to incorporate a bike walking path, and to strengthen the road, which sounds like a win-win for the community. Mr. Lainer reported on chronic wasting disease in the deer, elk, and our area. I thought it was interesting that this disease does not appear to affect animals such as antelope, and that animals such as mountain lions, and bobcats, and curios do not appear to get ill with it. He also stated that burying carcasses with this disease can spread through the soil anywhere water soars, and it can even be picked up by plants through the soil, either of which could cause transmission of the disease to deer and elk, which may be a future issue in our disposal of carcasses in the garbage. And that's about it.
Tammy, do you have anything?
Um, just, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so just, just, I, I think we pretty much have everybody up to date on the COVID situation. Obviously, we, we, we had the one employee that got, you know, ended up with the rest of us kind of being quarantined to work at home. I have a positive in my house, so I'm at home. I know we have another employee whose child thought they were sick, but they tested negative. were sick, but they tested uh, negative uh, this, this evening. And so um, we don't know at this point. It seems like it's just spreading like wildfire. So there, there, you know, there could be some more um, quarantines at town hall. But um, where we stand right now is I think as of Friday, we'll be able to have the employees that haven't had any other exposure besides the one employee I think should be off quarantine.
Yeah, we should be able to, everybody, nobody else comes down with it, be off quarantine and we could probably open city hall back up at that time.
Right. So that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Tammy?
Tammy, are our people that are affected by this doing okay?
Uh, yep. People, everybody seems to be doing fine.
Good. Thank you.
I can't tell if it'd just be better off for us to just actually get it. You're going to get some new quarantines. We don't have to get quarantined again for 90 days, but probably won't, probably won't be that easy for us.
One other quick question. Uh, are Scott's parents okay? Do you know that they're living with him and is that okay situation too?
Um, maybe Scott can answer that.
Sorry, didn't hear that question.
Scott, are your parents doing okay with this situation?
You know what? They are. They're uh, they're still, I want to say on the borderline, but uh, they're not getting any worse, but they're also not regaining full health very quickly. So, but uh, the rest of our issues, I think they're doing fine. Thank you for asking.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Kelly, do you have anything?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Randy?
Evening, Mayor and Council. The crew's been busy with garbage collection, street sweeping, leave pickup in the parks, upgrading meter pits and meters. Uh, did a water tap today and they're training on the new blade that showed up last week. We finally got the blade to do alleys and found out, got an email today, found out the lights for the trestle are not going to be shipped until December 19th. It's probably going to be the first year before we get some lights on the trestle. Other than that, that's all
Scott, do you have anything?
At this point on the Dollar General store, uh, the general contractor, Luciana, has filed for a general contractor's license and I have issued a temporary standing permit for that project to start. There's no, no timeline permitted yet or has been submitted to us at this point yet. Um, the meat vacuum plant, I haven't heard any words on since I've been out of the office via email or any other thing. Um, the little sitz coffee hut has passed through the state Wyoming uh, food and drug for their inspection by Ramona. And I did issue a permit for them to start with a utility contractor underwater sort of. That's all I have. Well, the other thing I guess right now is we're getting a lot of feedback from the landfill. Um, more or less, I guess, let's say contractors going to the landfill. It seems like they're implementing a lot stricter restrictions on the contractors, especially roofing contractors of the separation. So we're having a little bit of a, little bit of a issue there. Uh, I know there's always been in place contractors' disposal of separation of plastics and cardboards and woods, asphalt shingles. Uh, seems like it's getting harder and harder for the contractors to dump there, which we, we all knew this was coming, but um, it seems somewhere in there, um, I've, I've got to figure out a situation for the contractors doing jobs in town where they're not losing money by going to the landfill. It's just a concern of mine, I guess. That's all.
Scott, a quick question on these roofing contractors. Are, are these people trying to bring people, are trying to bring materials in from jobs that they have completed outside of the landfill jurisdiction?
Oh, it just kind of broke up. I couldn't hear you.
Are these contractors, these roofing contractors, are these people that are working locally on projects outside of the jurisdiction of the landfill and trying to bring that material back into the landfill?
Well, I haven't had any of those issues at this point from any contractors being uh, calling bringing materials out of town into the landfill. The biggest thing we're having now is um, they're asking, they're getting so detailed on the separation of materials, these contractors are bidding an extra two or three or sometimes four hours to separate trash, which I understand has got to be something that I can convey to them in the future, but it's also uh, creating some hardship. We had one contractor that done a large job at town with some, with some terracotta tile roofing. There's a lot of debris in it and it literally did end up costing him about six man, or six man hours to separate trash off, which uh, we all know time is money. And if he would have known, he could have bid it in the job, but um, the landfill was not uh, was not willing to bid one bit to see his side of the story either.
Is, is this separation of materials a result of the policies of the landfill in the Shaw County?
I, I'm going to say yes. I, I've not read them word for word and compared them, but I'm going to say yes.
We have no control over how the landfill has decided to make those definitions and how they want things separated anymore either.
Correct. That's, that's the hard part right now is making the transition.
Anything else for Scott? Not, we'll move on to Chief Field.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, last week, all of our officers were able to participate in a TASER recertification, uh, which is required on an annual basis. Uh, had some good training. We were also able to de-discuss uh, our new policy on TASERS, conducted energy weapons and our use of force policy as well. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the chief? Not will move on to Jared IT.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, just been working on the website since I was working from home last week. Uh, also getting some new cameras came in. So we're finishing up some of the, the rest of the cameras and the wiring here in the building. Got a new printer in for the uh, PD for in the officer's quarters there, uh, because their printer had passed away a little bit ago. Um, and yeah, that's about it.
Since we're closed to the public and I did have one other phone number, but they're, they are muted.
They would have to unmute.
They'd have to unmute themselves to be able to talk, but we'll take anything from bottom to the floor if somebody wants to talk to us. Hearing nothing at this time, I'm going to move on to new business, onto resolution 20, 20, resolution 20, 20 dash 22. We actually voted on this right after the executive session the other night. But this is just the resolution we have to pass to make it help with the official awarding. It's a resolution providing award of bid for the town square project to Caspar Building Systems. Is there a motion?
I will repass resolution 20, 20, 22, awarding this bid to Caspar Systems.
Councilman None has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
Councilman Kincaid did a second. Is there any discussion?
Do we know when they'll be able to start to prepare?
Actually, we've been, we've done part of the geotech's been done.
Yes.
Uh, you know, we did, I did sign part of that paperwork the other day for Caspar Building Systems. We do have a, a design drawing now. I know that the engineers have been talking to, to the contractor and I would think before too long that we should be able to get started on some of the infrastructure work that has to go in now.
Have they had, had any indication of having difficulties in the mining of materials?
I've not, I haven't heard anything at all. So should be.
I know they got things ordered. That's all I know. I did sign, just so you know, Mr. Ver, I did sign the paperwork for the playground equipment. Um, going straight to the playground equipment and the installers who got a better price saved us about $150,000. So I did sign that paperwork and set it back up.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, favor of passing resolution 20, 20 dash 22 signify by saying aye.
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 Next order of business is the Town of Glen Rock ordinance number 722, Glen Rock Town code parking ordinances and ordinance updating Glen Rock Town Code Chapter 13 Motor Vehicle and Traffic to include articles 1301, 1303, 1304, and 13.07. Is there a motion for first reading?
I will accept this ordinance on first reading.
Councilwoman None has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilwoman Vons has seconded that. Any discussion?
Will there be any changes in this after the discussion we had tonight?
Yeah, there's, there's two more readings on this, so things can change between now and the final reading.
So they could say they can incorporate their amendments that are updated.
There, yeah, there's things can be changed up until after the third reading. This is just the first reading of it. Any other discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Motion carries. Next order of business is our bills and claims. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We pay our bills.
A motion by Councilman Kincaid. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilwoman None has seconded it. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
I see we're getting bill 16,0244 for the trestle lighting. Why are we, we're not going to pay that before we get the lights, are we?
No, we're paying half of that. Um, because they've already got the wiring in place. So we had to pay for some of that wiring and the work done.
So is that the entire cost for the trestle lighting? So we're going to pay for the entire cost?
No, because each, each light is about $20,000. That was the wiring and the boxes to be installed. That just covers.
Oh, okay.
Wiring installation. It doesn't include the lights yet.
Okay. Okay. That's what I was checking on. I didn't know if that included the lights. So all right, that's all I needed to know.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of paying our bills and claims signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay. Motion carries. Just so everybody knows, who, what I want to hear present with me this evening is Councilwoman None. If you guys can stop in tomorrow to sign up on the bills and claim approval signature page for Treasurer Lewis, we greatly appreciate that. And is there a motion for adjournment?
We have drawings. If anybody can stop in tomorrow, I'll hand you a drawing. I printed them out. I'll give one to Margaret tonight. So as a park.
We have a new layout of the, of the town square and uh, future site of how that will be down there along with where the Boys and Girls Club building will be. So yeah, please stop in and get a copy of this so you can see all of it.
Okay. So we can get in, Bruce? The doors are open?
Uh, the doors aren't, the doors aren't open, but just call in and that's, that's going to let you in. Still a problem.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any other things to come before the council, before we close? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I will be adjourned.
Councilwoman None has made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Been seconded by Councilwoman Vons. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to let you know that I found you guys.
Yes.
I've been on my phone and I finally found you.
Better late than never.
Only took me 45 minutes, not an hour.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Motion carries. Thank everybody for getting in contact this evening and we will, please come in and sign paperwork tomorrow that we need you to sign and we will go from there. Thank you.
All righty.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.